30th, thanks to everybody for being here. So we have officially five people on the list tonight. And so what we typically do is try and take our half hour and divide it up by the folks who are here. So with five people, it looks like everybody's gonna get about five or six minutes or so. And we'll go through and we'll get through, answer as many questions as we can, but we've gotta stick to our time if we could, and we'll get through everybody tonight. And we will start with Mr. List because he was here last week and got bumped to this week. So, Mr. List, good evening and welcome. Come on and join us.
Hi, thank you. I did talk to Jamie.
Just briefly identify yourself.
My name is Mike List.
You can sign in as soon as you're done, so that's good.
My name is Mike List. 103135th Avenue South, Bloomington, 55420. This is in regard to a number of, you know, emails and contacts and previous discussions that we've had. Jamie did reach out and let me know that they did send an email. I have not had a chance to review it, so I think that will just kind of table that discussion until I have a chance to review the material.
Sure, that makes sense.
From Jamie. So, I do have one quick question.
Yes.
And I'll try and keep it short. On the sales tax, I was looking into it, doing a little research for voting. The, how much, so there's the percentage that they're saying 63% or whatever that number, I don't know, there's a variability, is gonna be associated to non-residents, right? Are people visiting Bloomington and they'll be paying that, that share? How much of that is associated to the Mall of America? Just a ballpark number.
Mr. Mayor and council members.
I mean, if you... I don't have the, I don't have the specific percentage. What I will tell you is before pandemic, the number that we had was about 70% non-resident. And then when we got the numbers for 2020, middle of the pandemic, that number had gone down to about 60%.
That makes sense.
So, yeah, so when you see the mall traffic drop, and the hotels especially, were largely unoccupied, that was about a 10% difference.
And so that was more than, so when you said 70%, that's 70% of, let's just say the number is 65, whatever that non-resident number is, is that 70% of that 65?
Of all the tax revenues, okay, all the sales tax revenue generated, 70% was coming from non-residents or something, actually even higher, it was 73.
Okay.
But it dropped to 60 during pandemic, now it's back up to 65.
But out of that 65, what would you say is attributed to the Mall of America?
So, I'm guessing it's probably 10 to 12%.
And 12% of that.
It'd be a little bit higher, just because that pandemic year.
Yeah.
That's the variability we saw in terms of the drop.
Okay, that seems, okay.
And I'm including hotels in that, right?
Because, and then the service charge associated to the, to the hotels. So about 12% of, or 10% of that 70% or 65% is associated or directly attributed to the Mall of America?
Yeah, I'd say maybe it's like 10% or, it's probably 12 to 15% overall. I think that's a pretty good save.
Of, of...
That's what we see across all sectors, is that the mall accounts for about 10, 10 to 15% of our revenues on all revenues.
And the only reason I kind of bring it up is just doing some quick research, and I mean, now East Rutherford now has a lawsuit against, you know, the American, they call it the dream or something. And what is that? I think it's like $8 million lawsuit for lack of paying sewer and, so my, so my concern is, we're doubling down on our dependency of the Mall of America, not only through property tax, but now we're moving into sales tax, which makes us even more dependent on it. And I'm just trying to sort all that out. Is, is that the direction that, you know, we wanna, we wanna go towards? I mean, they just got a, you know, being loaned for four years, and they were behind in mispayments, and, I mean, I just did a quick Google and it was like, oh, good grief.
And then, yeah, that's, you're right, it's old good grief. I will say it's the same company, it's two entirely different properties in two entirely different markets. I mean, I will say that, and Councilmember Nelson.
I also believe a sales tax is not paid by the Mall of America, it's paid by the retailers that are there. So if you go shop there, that store has to collect and send that in. So I don't think there's risk that Mall of America would stop paying sales tax in, like there might be a risk that they stop paying their utilities, like they did Heathroster or whatever, so.
Well, and then I'm just kind of bringing it up in context of, you know, it's a single entity business, right? They're going to be transferring revenue that they make in Bloomington to cover problems and East Rutherford, right? But, yeah, we have no control over it.
They're not collecting the sales tax. The sales, there's the transfer to East Rutherford.
If the mall were to close, close, shuts down, we'd have bigger problems than the sale.
No, that's, well, I'm just saying, they're gonna be taking their, their revenue streams and moving those to other areas. So then, what type of quality service, there's gonna be slow degradation of the properties and everything else that are associated with Bloomington. Bloomington's kind of the cash cow, is, is the angle that I'm going at. And I recognize that Mall of America does not pay sales tax, that's paid at the register, right?
Mr. List, you have just passed your five minutes now. Appreciate it, appreciate you bringing up the, the topic. And again, if you could sign in as you wrap up here, and we will move on in our day here.
Mr. Mayor.
Very quickly.
On BloomingtonForward.org, if you want to do this, Mike, the actual sales tax analysis is there, and it, the way that they calculate it is they count it at the state level by groups of, that, yes, so it doesn't necessarily help you with the mall specific stuff? Yeah, that one. You can, by, by the categories, infer for yourself which categories are sold mostly at the mall.
Yeah.
Things on there that aren't sold at the mall at all.
Yeah, I broke it out about 50%. So I've already kind of done that analysis.
All right, so.
Sounds good.
Pam, join us please. Mike, if you could get your laptop.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Contained over yonder, so sit down and talk to us, thank you.
She's really nice, I just talked to her. She would excuse me. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm kind of following up on last week when Dale Johnson brought up that house in, turns out, my neighborhood, and I wrote to the council for all of you guys here. Frankly, the gravel in the backyard is the least of my problem, I think it's more environmental, but that's a whole other thing. My concern with things like that, and Denise had responded that it takes a while, could be a year. My concern are extra cars at properties, and as you had mentioned with the group homes, but also rentals. This home is owned, and I think I sent that to you guys, three people purchased it, it's non-homesteaded, I'm not sure who all is living there, but they sure have a lot of cars. And the backyard has often six cars parked in the back, and they're usually big vans or pickup trucks, and then two or three in the front. I did a Google search, you know, the overhead picture, just about every picture, there were all these cars lined up, which at a corner can be dangerous for kids or bikes or anything coming around. So I guess I just want to stress, I have called in with a number of environmental things. Some get like that, and I tend to think it depends on the resident. Some people, oh geez, I didn't know, you know, a lot of people, I talked to my neighbors, oh, I didn't know you couldn't do this or that. But some people are just plain jerks, and if they rent them and you have bad oversight, that doesn't help. So I really wish the attitude of Denise or the city, I used to talk to Lynn Moore all the time. I really liked her, I, when I talked to people, I have little drawings and I always had smiley faces, and Jamie, I feel really bad that some people like her no longer feel comfortable talking to me, and then to have it just waste more time going to Denise. I really liked Lynn, and I always expressed my appreciation, and I know that they can't, we don't want to go in there and kick out everybody who violates something, but that house has been a problem. So, one, wish we'd be more careful with renters and landlords, especially, that tends to be more of the problem, when it's a multi-family home. Hit a corner, that's a whole other story. They've cleaned up the act now. A guy from Canada moved here and he does the lawn and lots of stuff. The other thing is cars. Now, when I hear the planning commission and you guys talk about smaller garages, smaller parking areas, smaller basement, have you driven around East Bloomington lately? There are a lot of cars, and if you think the people who are poorer, who need affordable housing, don't have multiple vehicles, a lot of times it's like a generational family. So you have four, five, six cars, who knows what's in, usually stored, up and down the driveway, in the street, trash day, good luck getting through, and then in the winter, move the cars so the plows can get through. So those types of things may seem like whatever, but it makes it difficult for the rest of us to go around if the plow lines are there. 18th Avenue, I don't know if any of you, you live over in these, 18th and 90th, there's, there was a, there's a house there, but on 18th Avenue between 90th and 91st, there's some apartments across from houses, always totally lined with cars. Last winter, a car was buried, buried, for like two weeks. So obviously, they weren't using it or driving it, or, you know what I mean? I'd kind of need my car sooner than that. But that house at 18th and 90th, constantly leaving trash out, their containers, junk all over, wasn't, house was falling apart, the garage door, everything, all winter toys, kids' toys were all in the yard. Or really, I have a friend who lives next door to them. Really weird thing happened a couple of months ago. Fire in the middle of the night, so it's deemed inhabitable, and somebody else bought it and they're trying to fix it up. So my neighbor's like, didn't expect it to end that way. But this gal, again, when the, you guys, if I can find it, the city can, this person hasn't paid taxes and has been evicted everywhere she's ever lived, and, you know, why would I pay that? When there's a history of it, then I don't think they deserve the grace to stay and get all these chances, you know? It's like, okay, there's a history here, let's try to clean up.
Five minutes, Pam.
Yeah, so that's just what I wanted.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And Lynn Moore and her department are really great people.
And if I may just very briefly, very quickly, thank you. I know in the past we have brought up, cause not just, obviously residential properties that can be a problem for quite a while, but commercial as well. And I know businesses on the east side over Old Cedar, Old Shock, the fine, the max fine we can levy, they just work into their bottom line, legally violate environmental, so it's a holistic, it's a good idea.
But all these, where I could afford to move.
You're up next.
Thank you, thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council staff and various attendees. My name is Chris Wickland, and I really appreciate your time here tonight, listening to me. I am a very sad and frustrated Bloomington resident. To say that I'm super disappointed in Bloomington's environmental health and enforcers and their terrible lack of customer service, I'm gonna say is a super understatement, truly an understatement, great frustration I have. I'm seeking a variance, or $10 million, maybe not the money. I'm seeking a variance or a small change to the code, and the cancellation of all the fines and all the fees that I've been assessed for the pre-approved, city pre-approved gazebo that's on my driveway. My brief topics include a background, my concerns, my gazebo stats, my request, and sort of a chronology of frustration, which my daughter has some handouts and some photos that she'll pass out afterwards, so we don't spend a lot of time on that. My background, I'm a Bloomington citizen for 58 years, so now you know my age, and I'm a homeowner for more than 40, 40 years in Bloomington. I'm currently a teacher in Bloomington, private coach, teacher, private tutor, and previously owned a restaurant also in Bloomington. I'm active in the community. I volunteer, I'm a block captain, 15 plus years running National Night Out, and I've hosted safety meetings at my house when there was some terrible distress in the neighborhood, multiple safety meetings. My concern is I did my due diligence. I reached out to Bloomington Environmental Health about my plans for the gazebo. I hadn't even bought anything yet. I talked to someone over the phone. She came out to my house multiple times because there were some other issues as well, but we focused on this gazebo, I gave her pictures of what I planned to buy, talked to her about where, I was concerned about where did it have to be placed, you know, how far away from the property line, all of that. She said my plan was acceptable to install the gazebo and anchor it securely to my driveway to use it for my classic car to park over the winter, winter months only. I do not park cars under it any other time. I purchased the gazebo, had it professionally installed and securely anchored to the driveway. Many months later, I started getting messages from the city and fines and additional fees. My concern is that the pre-approved gazebo was installed and it took a lot of money to buy that, it took a lot of money to have it professionally installed and securely anchored. Now I'm supposed to spend many thousands more to have it removed, to do what with it, I don't know. I'm not gonna take down trees in my yard to put up a gazebo, there's simply no room. Gazebo stats, it can withstand 2,500 pounds of snow, it's pretty hardy. It is an outdoor pavilion with high-quality aluminum frames, galvanized steel roof, it can, it can withstand 40 mile an hour winds plus. Now the hardtop steel roof slopes downwards, so the snow flows right off it seamlessly. Again, my request, how can I get help to resolve this issue from the city of Bloomington, the city council, for this pre-approved gazebo that's on my driveway? I would like a variance or a small change to city code, allowing it to stay put. I would like the removal of all the fines. I was shocked to learn that the fines just recently doubled, like a month ago. So I'm up to $1,200 in fines and fees, I had no idea till I literally called the office last week, that those fines had doubled. And I would also like somebody maybe from the city council or city attorney, whoever it is, city attorney, maybe not, to work with me to help resolve this problem. I have reached out significantly, my daughter can pass out, there's a whole chronology of frustration, quite frankly, of everything that I've covered on here and some photos, so she can pass that around to everybody, so you have a copy. It also includes the original letter that I sent multiple times to the city to seek help, and I've not just been sitting on my thumbs, I've been trying to get a resolution, and I just keep getting fines on top of fines, so that's it.
I appreciate it, I appreciate your frustration, and appreciate that we'll, without knowing the background, I mean, there's always, there's always in this.
Yes.
Two sides, right? I mean, as to what they may have been thinking in environmental health when they approved it, or the building code when they approved it as a vote. So, I, I don't want to say anything one way or the other right now, other than we will ask staff to take a look into this.
Okay.
And I will commit, we'll, we'll try and work to a resolution in some way.
Right.
I think we generally do in the city of Bloomington, we try and figure this out.
Right.
We never, I don't think the heavy-handed approach is ever the right approach to take, and not the first one to take. And so we'll, we'll turn it over to the city manager, turn it over to staff, we've got the details and the information now, and we will...
Great, and should I circle back around with somebody as a point person, or what, where do I leave this, so I'm not just, you know, walking away from it and hearing?
Follow up, Mr. Verbrugge.
And I'm sorry, what was your name, sir? Okay, wonderful, city manager.
City manager, so.
Great, fantastic.
Okay.
Very good.
Very quickly, yes?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, excuse me, I'm curious, are you represented by legal counsel right now? I'm the city attorney, I'm just wanting to make sure we follow our ethics rules if we communicate.
I'm not, should I be?
I can't give you legal advice.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not represented. No, my daughter, you know, she's not an attorney. But she does want me to move to Eden Prairie.
Can I ask one question, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, just the note on the summer of 2021, Ms. Wickland, where you say that it got verbally approved by somebody with our U staff, do you remember who that was that you talked?
It's in the letter on the second page, Amari, do you remember her last name?
Amari.
Amari, yeah, she came to my house actually quite a few times.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thanks you guys, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Sharon, good evening and welcome.
I need a pen to sign you, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight, and I have notes to myself, because I have three things that I want to talk about, and I better watch my time. First, I, I wanted to comment on something from last listening session that I think I heard, and it's regarding this format for listening sessions, and I think I heard, Mr. Mayor, I think I heard you say that, that you and the council are actually evaluating this format through the end of this year. And I think it's human nature for people to not necessarily comment when they like the way things are, and so I wanted to make sure and come here tonight to tell you, I like the way things are. I really appreciate this format for the listening sessions, I appreciate the personal, more informal setting for this, so I love that you do this. I love that even if I hadn't been here in person tonight, I could have called in and participated that way, so I just want to say thank you, and here's one resident saying, I like it just the way it is, and I hope you don't move back to the way it used to be. Speaking of things that I like the way they are, I wanted to also mention my second point, which is, thank you for paving the parking lot at my local park, Lake Gerard Park. That park is now perfect, in my opinion. The parking lot is much more easy to get in and out of, it's not rutted and muddy, and yet the park itself is still like this rustic backwoods, it's like this secret gem in my neighborhood, and I love it so much. So I wanted to say thanks, job well done. One thing I'm...
What park was that?
Gerard, Lake Gerard, yeah, Lake Gerard Park, yeah, which is on 84th Street, which brings me to my third point, and Councilmember DeLisandro can see it coming. So what I would like to bring up is, I would like to ask that you consider reconsideration of the pedestrian safety on 84th Street at Thomas Avenue. So just to bring everybody up to speed for that particular neighborhood area, what we have is 84th Street truncates, of course, at Penn Avenue, and then it runs way out west and eventually takes you to Bush Lake. So at Penn, we have a full service stoplight situation, and at Xerxes we do. But between those two, there's not a lot to slow down traffic, and I'll remind everybody that there is Washburn Elementary School right there at Washburn and 84th. So now what we do have currently in place at Thomas on 84th Street, there is a pedestrian crosswalk, and there are those pedestrian activated flashing signal lights, so when you step up, coming across to Thomas, you step up to 84th Street, you want to make your way across 84th Street, you can activate that, but the cars simply still do not stop. And many is the time, even a relatively bigger target than a little kid like me comes there, with or without a dog or two, and I come up there and I press the lights and they go on, and they start flashing, and the cars still come whizzing across 84th Street, and I have had to jump back onto the curb a few times and pull my dog with me. And again, I'm a bigger target than little kids, so my, my concern, I, I can probably get out of the way of a moving vehicle or just sit there and wait for the traffic to clear, and then eventually, even though I have the pedestrian and they should yield the right of way, they don't, not always anyway. But I hate to think about little kids coming to and from Washburn Elementary and coming into our neighborhood to try to find their way home and getting out in the middle of that intersection, they're a much smaller, harder to see target. So, that is why I am, I'm requesting that if you would please, in, in light of, I think we have some renewed interest in various sections of the country, of the city right now, looking at safety, pedestrian safety, and especially in school zones, I would ask that we look at the intersection of Thomas and 84th Street. Now, I'm no traffic engineer, and I, but I know you have people on staff who are, and you know, my, from my layman's perspective, I think the perfect solution would be stop signs. And I know traffic engineers might say, well, you might think that is, but it's really not, and here's why, and they know better than I do, so I'm not going to sit here and profess to know better than traffic engineers, but I'm just trying to say, from my perspective, it looks like stop signs would be the way to go, but I'll leave it up to you, but I just wanted to request that you reinvestigate that particular intersection. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you.
I think you and I talked about this.
Yeah, we have.
Mr. Mayor, I do think Washburn's a great candidate for our, our school zone that we've been talking about for a while. It makes me really uncomfortable driving along there as well, and I think that if you think about from Xerxes to Penn, if, if you can just take that section, and when considering the school zone and everything else in there, we could probably come up with a couple of different solutions that might make it easier for people to just, you know, even if that whole section is slower by nature, or something to that effect.
Yep.
I'm with you.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you for your time.
Questions? If not, thank you so very much. Look at us right on time. And Ms. Cooley, Jan Cooley?
Yes.
Wrapping this up tonight, good evening and welcome, come on up.
I, I had...
Can you come up to the, to the table here, so we can get you, make sure you're on the microphone, if you could, please?
People were considered. I had Sela, a couple years ago, do work on my house. They totally destroyed it, I have a paper said $88,000, and meanwhile, they forged my name on $16,000 something, and so... So anyways, I had to get, you know, another, whatever, the Christian law firm, and they just got $30,000, told me to go away. And meanwhile, I've got all this damage, and if we would have gone to court, which they canceled, it would have been Judge Christian Sanders. And, you know, back in October 90th, Judge Bush married us in the house. My husband died in 2014, and I've got all of this damage to my house. And Sela, and then I got a letter when I went to Apple Valley to negotiate stuff, which I shouldn't have. It, it cost me money, and then they wanted this letter from Oz, and the guy said it was his brother, so he told me to go across on the Edina side and wanted me to, to deliver it up on the fifth floor. So I went up there and, and the women didn't know that, and I said, you know, Mr. Vic, and they said, there's no Mr. Vic, either he was Hellmuth or Johnson. And they shoved me in the elevator, and now all the way down, well, you came to break this, you came to do this, and they shoved me out the doors. So I went to the Edina Police and told them, and they wrote it down and went, yeah, with the address to Hellmuth and whatever, and he got it. And it's like, I've done $88,000 damage.
Ms. Cooley, I'm very sorry to hear this, I really am, and I believe you, you spoke to us at one point...
Right, I did.
At the listening session. Now, it sounds like you have, you have legal counsel, obviously.
Oh, are you kidding? They shut the phones down, so I can't even talk to them, because they got $30,000. The Christian law firm, they were on 800 and whatever.
So, I mean, 30,000, so that, so has this case been settled then, is that what?
Well, yeah, it is, because they shut the phones down, they got 30,000, and I'm sitting with $88,000 damage to my house, and then they shut the phones up. Well, I used my son's phone to call this Dan Eaton who originally I signed up with, well, he's no longer there, and so the person that's there, I told him, I said, my house is ruined, whatever, and so there's nothing he can do, I, I'm still out, my house is totally ruined, they, they dented my metal roof.
I'm a, so I don't want to sound like we're, we're just...
Yeah.
...you off, but there's, as a, as a council, there's not a lot we can do here as a city council.
I know.
But what we can do, and what I will ask Mr. Verbrugge to do, is to have some resources, find some resources available to you, either through Hanuphan County perhaps?
Senior services.
Senior services.
Attorney General.
The Attorney General's Office, a variety of different possibilities who might be able to help you. Because, again, as, and I, I feel for you, I certainly do, certainly do, but there's very little as a council that we can do regarding damage between, you know, a roofing company... very little as a council that we can do regarding damage between, you know, a roofing company and a, and a private homeowner, I'm afraid.
I know. And then when I, I found out Judge Christian, whatever, he was the people for the moots and I called down there and he laughed at me. I, I have no faith in the justice system. My house is damaged.
I'm very sorry about that, I truly am. But I, I.
I wouldn't.
We make sure, if you could make sure we get your contact information written down there and as I said, between our, our city, city manager, our city attorney has possibilities, I know ideas as well, but we'll provide whatever resources we can as a city, although I will say upfront, the resources that we're able to provide are probably pretty limited.
I know.
All right.
Well, I, I wouldn't have Sella do an outhouse and they, they swore at me and then when I went over to pay it, Helmut and whatever, the women shoved me.
Yeah, that's, I'm.
Don't anybody from Sella.
Thank you. All right. So, Mr. Verbrugge, if you could follow up with that, I would greatly appreciate that. So thank you. Also, we are at time and we are through our five speakers this evening, I look for a multiple.
Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve, we are adjourned seven zero, we will meet downstairs at six thirty for the council meeting. Thanks to all our speakers this evening, thanks for coming in.